Good afternoon, I see at six o'clock. And we call the meeting to order. Shannon, will you call the roll, please?
Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Taylor. Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Height.
Here.
Witcher.
Present.
Thank you very much. I invite you to stand for the prayer and pledge by Councilmember Harris.
All right. Dear Lord, we stand here tonight as public servants and citizens of this fine community, Lord. We pray, Lord, that we now understand fully our duties and responsibilities to our citizens for their safety, to maintain the quality of life, and to better the quality of life. We ask you, Lord, that you will help us in that endeavor as we make decisions to the future of our city of North Little Rock. We pray, Lord, that you will bless our police, our fire, our electric company, and all the citizens and all the employees that work for our fine city, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So move.
Second.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Communications, anybody want to pull any of the communications?
Number one, please.
Number one. Anybody else? How about a motion to approve two through four?
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Thank you very much. How about number one?
Move, we accept and file number one.
You want it read?
Second.
And there's a tie-ty?
No, but Karen needs to talk to us.
Talk to us, Karen, then we'll vote on it.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Last meeting, I put a hard copy at everyone's desk of the actuarial valuation for the non-uniform pension plan for the plan year 2017, so it's effective July, January 1st, 2018. And there is, I believe, an electronic copy attached to the agenda. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things in that report, Mayor. On the very first page, the number in the plan, active members 501 versus 500, almost exactly identical, and active members 195 to 187, so not much fluctuation there. On the next page, really the most key part of all this document is this summary, the actuarial status of the plan. In the first paragraph, the contribution level for the 2018 plan year is recommended to be $4.2 million or 18.74% of covered payroll. And then in the second paragraph, this year, the funded status of the plan increased from 62.24% to 65.44%. And as a reminder, for the 2017 fiscal year, the council voted to increase the city's contributions from 6% to 9%, and employee contributions stayed 4%. So for 2017, this data in this report covers that. The total contribution was 13%. Beginning January 1st, 2018, the council voted to increase the city's contribution to 10% and the employee contribution to 5% for a total contribution of 15%. Again, the recommendation for the out of this plan is a total contribution of 18.74%. The pension board did review quickly the document at their last meeting, and we had a little bit of discussion about recommendations to the council for funding next year. No decisions were made, but we will bring a recommendation on whether or not we would like to see increased contributions approved by the council for the year 2019. And I know it's a lot, so of course, if you ever have any questions about the fund or any of this data, feel free to reach out to me.
Karen, bring us, when you come back, what some of the other cities do and other retirement funds do, especially municipals?
Yes, sir.
So that we can see if we're below, above, average, whatever.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We got a motion. How about a second?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Let's go straight into the special call. You call that, please.
Special call from Amy Fields, City Attorney, sent Friday, August 10th, 2018. Subject R-18161, special call. Honorable members of the North Little Rock City Council, the purpose of this email is to advise you that Mayor Smith has called a special meeting of the North Little Rock Council, City Council, at 6:05 PM on Monday, August 13th, 2018, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. R-18161 authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Diamond Construction for the extension of sanitary sewer improvements for the Sixth Street Design Project appropriating funds. Sponsor Mayor Joe A. Smith pursuant to Section 248.2 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code. All members were notified.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call the resolution.
R-18161, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Diamond Construction for the extension of sanitary sewer improvements for the Sixth Street Design Project appropriating funds.
Yeah, Charlie? Move for adoption.
Second.
Questions, comments? On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Thank you. Let's go. We've got a special presentation. Our Fit to Live Director, Isaac Henry, is here. Isaac, if you want to come up and... Isaac and, of course, you know, Beth and her passion for the community gardens has gone to the next level, no doubt, and we've really been fairly, really successful with it. And we met, Councilmember White and Isaac and I met and looked over the successes of all the community gardens that we have, and so we thought it was best for Isaac to come. And because we're having problems with our TV equipment, we're not going to be able to do a PowerPoint, but I think he passed out to you what we hoped to show on PowerPoint. And we wanted Isaac to go over a little bit, tell you the challenges that we have, and then go from there, so.
Okay.
So, George.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Just briefly, I would like to introduce several of our garden managers actually here and our garden coworkers. If you're a garden manager, would you please stand?
Yay. Great job, guys.
Also, we have our two garden coworkers, Lain Anderson and Jewel Coleman. So the reason we're here, we have over 20 active gardens, as we see in the presentation, and which we can see on the screen, because you'd be amazed at what our gardens do for our communities. And we ran into a snag this year because the program that Lain and Jewel have been working for, that we've been using for the last several years, has come to an end. Garden Corps, it's a subsidiary of AmeriCorps, and they've decided that the company that was sponsoring them can't sponsor them anymore. So the money's there for the program, but they don't have a sponsor. So we run into a problem here with the city of North Little Rock, because we've always had at least one to two garden workers to help maintain and assist our garden managers, and now that program has ended. So my proposal is to actually bring in a part-time employee with the city of North Little Rock to do just that. And we've already allowed, or had money allotted into our budget that, because we did a price match with Garden Corps. So they paid half, and then the city paid half of the salary of our Garden Corps workers. So without that program, then we would need to hire a part-time employee to do just that. And so, and that employee would do just what Jewel and Lain do. They do a great job. They assist our garden workers. They assist our application process. The application is about 14 pages long, and it details exactly what we want in our gardens and how we want them to look. And so the part-time employee is definitely needed, and basically, the part-time employee worked 20 hours a week at $20 an hour, and it's all in your packet. And it's adding, it's just adding $10,000 to that line item, which is community gardens.
Okay. Anybody got any questions? I support this 100%. We were paying 10, now we're going to pay 20, and... But when I saw the success of how many we have that are really doing what they're supposed to be doing and helping with these food deserts, if you will, then I thought it was well worth the opportunity to bring in a part-timer. So I wanted Isaac to show you and talk to you about it just a little bit before we come back with the quote ordinance to add a part-time. Any questions for Isaac? Beth?
Well, it's not a question. I just want to make sure that we added to this that the Garden Corps workers have done way more than what Isaac has talked about. I mean, they have been a real cheerleading squad for the community. Their expertise in gardening has been amazing, and then all the help they give each garden as needed for technical things. They also, they do a lot of the work to send donations out.
Yeah, simple irrigation systems, just a lot.
Yes. I mean, it's just huge what they have started doing. I mean, in the beginning, we didn't have that much that they did by comparison to now, and these young people really serve the community well, and I think also bring a real positive influence to the communities. And I think if each garden manager was asked here what their experience is with Garden Corps, they would have plenty to say.
No doubt. Ms. Robinson?
I'm excited about gardens. Of course, a bulk of them are in my ward, Ward Two, and a lot of these gardens are located in areas that are considered food deserts. So that, those gardens are going to help those communities out a whole lot. The part-time person, they're going to float between, to each garden, or as they're called upon, they'll go...
As they're called upon, as they're needed, just like they do now with our Garden Corps Members Day. They go to different, like Lain and Jewel, they were at the anti-poverty garden last week installing irrigation. We had a generous donation from Killen Company for our irrigation, and they donated irrigation supplies to us. And so they go, and then our garden workers go and install that irrigation.
Okay. Good job. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Isaac, very much.
Thank you.
And thank all of you guys that are making our program a success. We appreciate it. Okay, I think we're going into unfinished business.
Oh, 1854, Councilmember Robinson.
You got that? Okay, let's go to the next one. New business.
New business. R-18148, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an irrevocable contract of obligation with Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality for closure of the North Little Rock Airport landfill.
We do this every year, y'all. Every other year, I can't remember now if it's every year or every other year, but it's normal. So about a motion. How about a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Since it's in my ward.
Questions, comments? On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
R-18149, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a real estate contract with West Rock Coffee Roasting LLC and to sell certain real property located at Lot 14 of Collins Industrial Park subdivision in the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second.
The, this is a great opportunity for us and a great corporate citizen. Todd, you want to come up and say anything about this? Bottom line, and I'll certainly take the stage for you, but Todd's been working on this. West Rock's a $50 million company and 75 employees, and they are going to, with this addition, they're going to grow to 175 employees. They're going to grow to, they're going to triple their volume from 50 million to 160. I mean, it's just wonderful. This particular property was donated to the city by Brenton Sams.
Brenton Sams, yes. And then it's kind of interesting, we're thinking about making a wetlands bank, several properties across the city at a time, and it never came to fruition, and the Corps really never designated it as a conservation area. So luckily, they were issued a permit quickly, and this whole project has been fast-tracked because of production quotas and increases that West Rock has to make.
That's great. I didn't know we had land out there.
Well, it's just acre and a half or two acres. It's a little bitty spot.
Very big. Yeah.
Well, we want to thank the, you know...
If they don't, if they don't get this, let me just add one thing, the mayor is great and hit all the points. One point is, if they don't get this land, they'll have to move from North Little Rock and find another site. But they're very committed to North Little Rock. They love the workforce. They love the location, and all they need is this sale to go through.
Absolutely. They're doing great. Joe and Scott and Will Ford, that family is, are great businessmen. We're glad to have them in our corporate community, no doubt.
Coffee's, coffee's good, too.
Yeah, it is. Charlie?
I'm not trying to hold this up, but should there be a map attached to this? Is there, should there be a map? I'm saying, we couldn't attach it later and go ahead and act on it tonight, but should there be a map?
Yeah, it should have been.
Sometimes we have a map and sometimes we don't, and this is one that I did not have a map of the site to attach to it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's just right beside their building out there. There is a legal, Charlie. You know where West Rock is out there on?
Mall Mel.
Yeah. It's just north towards Mall Mel, and it's about an acre and a half right next to it. There's a ditch that kind of runs through it, so if you want a map, we'll get you a map.
Well, I just...
It's Ward Three. It's okay.
I mean, if everybody's okay without a map, I'm okay.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Okay. And do I have a second?
Yes.
Question? Ms. Ross?
Not a question, just a comment, because I get questions from time to time, and, you know, I think something I don't realize, that we do do these appraisals on these properties, and the appraise for $90,000, that's the full appraisal amount. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, when we get those questions.
Absolutely. Good point. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Thank you, Todd. Good job.
R-18150, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and offer to sell real property to the United States Department of Veterans Affairs and to sell certain real property located on Hill Road adjacent to the campus of Fort Logan H. Roots in the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
R-18151, Councilmembers Ross and White.
Call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and offer an acceptance with Andy C. Smith and Tracy S. Smith and to purchase certain real property located at 1711 Marion Street in the city of North Little Rock appropriating funds.
Move for adoption. Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Question?
Why are we purchasing this piece of property?
This piece of property is going to be turned into a conservation zone. It's a water, a flow-through area for water, and it has been a problem all along, so hasn't had a house on it in some time.
It's part of a drainage project that we have, and we had to have that area, and it's a vacant lot, so. Ms. Ross?
It's one of the CDBG projects that we're doing down there, and the easement's in there, and there's, the drainage's through there. A house does not need to be built there.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
R-18152, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to amend all agreements between the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, and Marler Engineering Company Incorporated to reflect the assignment of Marler Engineering Company Incorporated to Half Associates, Inc., which will now be known as Half Associates, Inc., DBA, Half Plus Marler.
Move for adoption. And we have a second, and we have an amendment.
We have an amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
We do. Exhibit A, it should be on everybody's desk. I didn't mend in.
We added one contract. I got an email from Melissa Irvin, and she found one more contract with Mr. Marler that needed to be added to our list.
Okay. We got a motion, and do I have a second?
Second. I'll second that amendment.
To have any comments on the motion to amend?
To amend. Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes. Move for adoption is amended.
Second. Okay, I've got Mike come up. Mike's a longtime friend of ours and a great engineer, and to tell us a little bit about this merger and introduce some of his new partners.
Thank you, Mayor. I felt like after 52 years of being in business in North Little Rock, it would be appropriate to have just a minute to address the council, and I appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you very much. Our new company will be Half Plus Marler here in Little Rock and North Little Rock. We do have an office in Little Rock, and we, and Half Associates is pledging to keep our office here in North Little Rock. I'll still be there. They were retaining all of our employees, plus additional employees, to provide additional services. I'll be over the office here, and we hope to expand it and continue to hire more North Little Rock employees. So we look forward to doing that. And at this time, I'd like to introduce some of my partners. If you two gentlemen would stand. To your left is Mark Edwards. Mark is the Executive Vice President of Half Associates in Richardson, Texas, and James Arbuckle. James is the Office Manager of our Little Rock branch, and I'll be working closely with these two gentlemen as we expand our operation here in North Little Rock. Thank you very much. And again, we pledge to keep our North Little Rock office. I'll be managing that office. The other thing I'd like to say, since I've got this opportunity, is just a little bit of history. My father started our company in 1966, so we've been here for 52 years, and it is with some emotions that I address you here, but not mixed emotions. I'm happy about this, very much so, and I really look forward to expanding our operation here. But I also very sincerely want to express my appreciation and gratitude to this council and Mayor Smith and the councils before this one and mayors before you, Mayor Smith, for all of the opportunities throughout the years since 1966 that you provided my father and then myself to provide services here in central Arkansas. And I just very much sincerely appreciate that. That gives me a great sense of fulfillment to have had those opportunities, and I want you to know that very sincerely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. We know that it's going to do nothing but get better with the additional capabilities out of the Richardson office and everything. The sky's the limit, right? Good deal. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
R-18153, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution appropriating $150,000 from the General Fund for the Code Enforcement Department demolition and debris removal program.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
R-18154, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the city attorney to initiate eminent domain proceedings against properties located at 1206 West Fourth Street and 219 Parker Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas appropriating funds.
So move.
Second. Mr. Witcher, second. Questions, comments? Mr. Taylor?
What's the basis of the, of the eminent domain?
The, there's two lots down there and with very subpar homes on them, and that particular neighborhood is growing so quickly. They've got 11 homes being built right now, and another 80 homes scheduled in their Phase Two or Three. They're be coming sometime soon. So I approached the owner of these properties and said we'd like to buy them, turn them into a park, or, you know, look at maybe a dog park or a pocket park down there, and she didn't know what they were worth, and so I said, well, you pick, you pick the appraisal, the appraising company, and I'll pay for it. The city will pay for the appraisal. And we got the appraisals back, and she still refused to sell it to us, and so I have chosen to do the eminent domain.
So, so a dog park is one of the planned uses for this?
Yeah.
And the other one, a pocket park, then?
Yeah, the one there on Fourth, I'm looking at a pocket park, and, because it'll be behind those 80 units, and it's behind the porches, and then the unit on Rockwater would be probably where I would like to do the dog park. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
R-18155, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 823 North D Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
On the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on 823 D Street? 823 D Street, seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
R-18156, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 1002 North D Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on 1002 North D Street? 1002 North D, seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
R-18157, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 1713 Parker Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on 1713 Parker? 1713 Parker, seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
R-18158, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located 32 Wright Circle in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
About a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anybody here to speak on 32 Wright Circle? Number 32 Wright Circle, seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
R-18159, Mayor Smith.
Now pull that. The owner has torn down that building.
R-18160, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on any of the grass-cutting liens and expenses? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher. Oh, 1866, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at 1920 North Locust Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from R3 and Conservation Zoning Classification to I2 zoning classification by amending ordinance number 7697 of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property. First reading.
Move to spend the readings. Second.
Got a motion to suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Ross, you want to tell everybody what that's going to be?
Well, I don't know if, how much we can tell, but...
I think we can tell it all, can't we, Norman?
Would you like Mr. Cliff... Would you like Mr. Clifton to come tell it, then? It's his story to tell.
Absolutely, Norman. We certainly do appreciate your involvement in this, and we're excited about the new tenant.
Yes, sir. Mayor and council members, we are presented an excellent opportunity for the city and myself to bring an international company into our city. And it's called Amazon. They are trying to
Put their headquarters there.
Bring a new concept in distribution. And they have picked a site of my property at nineteen-twenty North Locust Street. They have sent their environmental assessment team in, their site plan team. They've done their due diligence. They looked at everything, and they're excited about the site. They have had people look at our permitting process, or ordinances, things of this nature that they will have to do, and they are ready to get started. If we can get the affirmation from the city council tonight to approve this, well, they have emailed me today and said they're ready to get going. So hopefully, we can get this done. And it's their concept, and it's a new concept. This will be the only one like it in Arkansas. And their word to me is, if this approves to be profitable for them, and they don't see any reason why it should not be, then they would plan on, at the end of their term here, to erect a, at least a one-hundred-thousand-square-foot building. And the good thing that they're telling us is they're gonna have between sixty and a hundred new hires here in our city. So it looks to me like it's a great opportunity, and I certainly hope that we can get it passed for them and get them to come and join with us in North Little Rock.
We do appreciate it. We met with them last week, and certainly excited about the opportunity to have such a great company be a part of our community. And it's on a fast track. They wanna get this up and going before the holiday season. So I pledged to them that we would do everything we could do to make sure there was no roadblocks to make this thing happen.
And just one thing I wanna comment, too, and I know anybody that's tried to do anything, Ward one, we wanted approved by the community first. And Ward one, you know, Dark Hollow, they were definitely a buy-in on this, that Mr. Clifton talked to them first before we even agreed that, you know, we would support this. So, and the local hires, that's the big thing. The mini-distribution centers for Amazon is something new. You can look it up online. It's pretty interesting.
Yeah, I mean, that's seventy-five. West Rock's gonna be, you know, another hundred. That's two-hundred, that's a hundred and whatever that is.
Hearing.
Hang on, my calculator, bear.
A hundred and seventy-five lot.
I'm glad my wife's not watching tonight.
It's more than what we have.
Yeah, our economic development is going very, very well. So thank you to developers like you, Norman. We do appreciate you and Shirley both.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman.
Mr. Taylor?
I guess my only question is the I-two zoning. How did we, how did we come up with the I-two zoning? Was that their request, or?
That's the zoning classification that this operation would take. And it is adjacent to I-two on the north and east side of the property.
It's gonna be a warehouse.
Okay.
Okay. On the motion.
Ross?
I just went, the R-three was retained along the neighborhood there to protect the neighborhood, so there still is an R-three buffer in between that. Yes.
Ms. Ross, please, yes.
We need a motion to adopt.
Oh.
So moved.
Second. Okay, got it. Go.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Oh eighteen sixty-seven, Mayor Smith.
That's Councilmember White, I believe.
Please call it.
Oh, I'm sorry. An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at one-seven-one-one Marion Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from R-three to conservation zoning classification by amending ordinance number seven-six-nine-seven of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second. A motion to suspend the readings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
I'm gonna call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on the rezoning of seventeen-eleven Marion from an R-three to a conservation zoning? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Mayor?
Emergency.
On the emergency. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Do we need an emergency on sixty-six?
We did one.
Did we do one? Okay. Okay.
Oh eighteen sixty-eight, Councilmember Height. Please call it. An ordinance amending Article twenty-one, Table of Permitted Uses of Ordinance seven-six-nine-seven, the North Little Rock Zoning Ordinance, to remove pond shops as a permitted use in C-four and C-five, and as a conditional use in C-three zones. First reading.
Okay, let's stop.
And all ratings?
Let me stop for just a minute. Ms. White, did you have?
Yeah, I did. I just wanted to make a comment about oh eighteen sixty-seven. That is that lot we were talking about earlier. And I had spoken with the neighborhood group leader, and we have Kim Burgess out here, who is from Marion Street, and they're looking forward to that lot being kept clean. It hasn't been a lot that's been kept tidy and cleaned up. And, you know, maybe they sometime wanna put some park benches on it, or, you know, some other little things like that.
Ms. Ross?
I would like to be added as a sponsor if the
Yeah, without objection, would you add Ms. Ross as a sponsor to sixty-seven? Okay, Mr. Height made a motion to suspend all readings on sixty-eight. Do we have a second? Second. On the motion to suspend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
Well, a motion to adopt, but I, you know, I was gonna offer an explanation if anybody wanted to.
Let me get a second. Give me a second, somebody? Oh, second. All right, go ahead.
Okay, it was discovered recently that pond shops in C-four and C-five zoning were permitted uses. And the way I discovered that was, a new pond shop appeared one day out on Warden Road, next door to the Blood Plasma Center. And I think about that same time, older woman, Ross, contacted me that she'd had somebody contact her about that pond shop going in out there. So I called Sean and asked him what was going on, and he said it's permitted use in a C-four or C-five zone, and they did everything, you know, they were certainly in compliance. And so I decided that, hold on just a second. Hold on just a second. I think the city council should have the final say-so on any pond shops that go in in the city of North Little Rock. And so my legislation, if you're reading the third whereas on that, in this legislation, that it's in the best interest of the city and its residents, that all pond shops, this would be future pond shops, within the city be allowed only as a special use approved by the city council. So that's what my legislation is primarily doing.
Now, we did that.
Is that we get the final say-so on any pond shops.
We did that up there on JFK, and it was Ms. Ross's idea. It was a great idea, and so I support this. So we got a motion. Anybody else got any questions?
Wow. So, um, is is there something wrong with pond shops, or?
I didn't say there's anything wrong with pond shops, but the process that we went through for a recent pond shop that was approved up on John F. Kennedy Boulevard is that it had to come in front of the city council, because, and I think that any pond shop, that we should have the final say-so or final approval on that. I didn't say there was anything against pond shops, but I think we should be made aware of them and be required, and that we have some discussion about any future pond shops coming in the city of North Little Rock.
Ms. Robinson?
Well, I'm in agreement with Mr. Height, because Lord knows Ward two is full of them. And so I would like for, you know, the legislation, I'm sorry, Mr. Taylor.
I'm just curious. I mean, I love pond shops.
Well, I understand, but we've got our share in Ward two. So I'd like for them to have to come before the council anytime a new one wanna open.
Well, the thing I liked about it was that it goes with the operator. You know, that's why we've got it as special use, not a condition. It goes with the operator. And so if we're confident that he's gonna run a good operation, then, great. But if he leaves, then we gotta approve the next operator. So that was the reason I liked it, so.
Did, normally, these types of things are kind of vetted out through planning. Was this vetted out through planning, or is this straight to council?
It was permitted use, and, is Sean sitting here tonight?
No, he's on vacation.
Uh, it's a permitted use in that particular zoning out there, and so there was no need to go in front of the planning.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but typically, when, if we're gonna change the zoning on any items like this, it's kind of, it's kind of vetted through the planning commission. They talk about it, and massage it a little bit, and send a recommendation to council.
No, it didn't go through there. Yes, ma'am.
Pond shops, in Ms. Robinson's opinion, are just like used car lots down East Broadway. So I'm sorry. I think they oughta come back through us, and we vote on them. So I like the idea.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh eighteen sixty-nine, Councilmember Taylor.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a special use for a daycare center in an R-three zone for certain real property located at two-zero-zero-one Parker Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
Motion to suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
On the motion to adopt?
So move.
You'll have a second.
Second.
Ms. White?
I just have a question. Since it's been a year since this was approved, and they're going back to choosing to have this business, is there anything within, is the applicant here?
It's the same owner, just kind of, I think, had some issues moving forward, getting the project going. The project has always been a daycare. The owner bought it, came before us, we granted the use, and he didn't move fast enough within the timeframe that was allotted, so now he's back to, so he can move forward with the project.
What was the reason that didn't?
Personal emergency or something.
Okay. Thank you.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
That concludes the business.
I'd like to be added to the legislation.
Without objection?
Without objection.
Please do it. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes our night of business. Let's look over here at public comment. Let's talk about two that wanted to speak on the Fit to Live. Roy Wirt, Roy, are you here?
Yes, sir, I am.
Well, come up and give me three minutes of wisdom.
I certainly will, sir.
You got to take all the time you need.
I'll get right there.
Thank you very much to the Honorable Mayor Joe Smith and fine counsel of North Little Rock, Alderman, White. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. On behalf of Fit to Live, my name is Roy Wirt. I'm originally out of Conway. I attend church in Conway. But Conway also has a second location known as Axe Ministries, 1424 Franklin Street. Frank Stewart, Jacqueline Stewart are the shepherds. And I'm just a servant. As far as Fit to Live, I agree totally with the mayor on trying to keep the program. And the reason why, back in April the 6th, 2016, Channel 7 did a news article on Bering Cross where Mr. Harlan Hunter talked about, who is the president of the Neighborhood Association, talked about the deterioration in the crime and that we need to do something. Mayor Joe Smith also agreed. Axe took the initiative to make something happen. January the 3rd, Axe Ministries was awarded $125,000 by the National Resource Conservation Services and Alma USDA to create an oasis in a food desert. Now, we all know what a food desert is. Any place that you can't get fresh fruits and vegetables within a 20-mile radius. So during that time, my research led me to Fit to Live. I spoke with Mr. Isaac Henry. He spoke with Mr. Joe, Mayor Joe Smith. In agreeance, we were offered membership and received a $5,000 grant from the city of North Little Rock. We have worked with Youth Challenge at the Little Rock, at the North Little Rock Air Force Base. Came out and cleaned up the building for us, or the farm. One acre of land. We're going to put six high tunnel hoop houses, 30-foot wide, 96-foot deep. We're going to grow sweet corn, tomatoes, potatoes, healthy food in the Bering Cross neighborhood. What our idea is, is to change that neighborhood through nutrition. And with the help and support of the city of North Little Rock, we can do it. So I'm asking you for your continued support of the Fit to Live program. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. The Holly Anderson?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of Fit to Live Community Garden Program. My name is Holly Anderson and I am the urban conservationist with the Pulaski Conservation District. The mission of the district is to champion the conservation of air, water, wildlife and soil resources throughout our county. And I work quite a bit with school gardens, community gardens, urban production farms throughout the county. And I've had the wonderful opportunity to work for quite some time now with the Fit to Live Community Garden Program in North Little Rock. And I currently serve on the Advisory Committee to help Isaac in any way with any issues that come up with the gardens and also to review and process the grant funding requests that come in for the gardens. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time working with Fit to Live and as far as I know, it is the only program of its kind in the county, in Pulaski County. And I think it's something that the city of North Little Rock and that you should be very proud of. And, and I think you're paving the way for, for other cities and counties throughout the state. I actually had my counterpart in Faulkner County asked to come down and have me tour him around some of the gardens so that he could kind of see what was going on and being done here in North Little Rock. So I'm very happy for your continued support. I'm very proud of what you've been doing and I ask for your continued support. The young people with the AmeriCorps Garden Corps program have been instrumental in keeping these gardens going and doing a lot of the physical work. In addition to some of the other things we've heard about the irrigation and whatnot, they load compost. They actually start seeds in the greenhouse and bring out the starts to the different gardens. So they are instrumental in continuing this programming and the continuing success. And with AmeriCorps Garden Corps in doubt at this time with needing a new sponsor, we really do need this part-time position with the city of North Little Rock to continue the success. And I encourage you all to support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Bobby Taylor. Mayor, I'm going to say some things tonight that I don't feel comfortable about saying because I didn't think it would come to this, but it looks like it's going to. This is my next-door neighbor. Y'all know all about it. I've told you about it. I have a great deal of respect for you and the council members in here. And I've been to court with code enforcement, ain't no telling how many times. And this is a dead-end trip. The judge told him he can't haul this stuff in. He's running a business there. And one time I felt brave enough to ask this lady sitting right here, she was the prosecuting attorney for that particular evening. And I asked her if I could say something and she said yes. So when it come that time, the judge gave me permission to say something. And he want to know what it was. And I said, "Why do we keep coming down here for the same thing and nothing happens?" He didn't even act like he even heard anything I said. But he got on to my next-door neighbor again and told him, he said, "You can't do this. You can't keep hauling this stuff in here, sorting it out and junking it up. You can't do that." He said, "I will send you over in Little Rock and they will lock you up." And he never did do it and he never did say anything more about that. A few days later, the prosecuting attorney was in here up here talking to somebody. And he come across here and spoke to me and asked me how things was. I said, "They're just like they was the last time we was up there." He said, "Keep it taking pictures." I said, "What good does it do? It acted like it made him mad." So I'm not going back to the court anymore about that. One of your city employees come to the Rose City Crime Watch here a while back and was telling us how good that things were being cleaned up out here. And he turned around and told me, he said, "He's, it's just like that place there by you. It's almost cleaned up. I don't know where he's been. He ain't been by there at all." And there's, these mattresses and box springs and stuff that he's hauling in. I might not even should have a motor home there where I am, but I'm proud of it. And the rats got in the back end of it up through the exhaust system and eat about a day and a half, two days' wires it took me to wire that thing back. And I ain't no telling how many times that I've told the code enforcement, and they know it, about the rats. And they've been there, they've done everything they can do. I don't have a thing against the code enforcement. But right now, I'm almost scared to go to bed and go to sleep. I put out one of his fires here not too long ago. He built it under the carport. The roof is not trimmed up there on the edge. It's hanging over about this far down. And I told him, I said, "Billy, you don't put that fire out. I'm going to call the fire departments." He went to cuss it. He said, "I'm cooking." I said, "I don't care what you're doing. Get it out from under that carport, get it out in the backyard." About three nights later, he built one under the front porch. And you can drive by there and look, you don't have to take my word for this. All of the whole gable end of the house is as black as it can be where he has smoked it up. So I called the fire department and talked to the marshal. And he told me, next time I've seen something like this, to call him. Here, a couple nights ago, I called the police on account of his loud music. I don't know what he's up to. But I called the police, they showed up and drove on by. The next night, I told them, I said, "Come to the house. I want to talk to him." So he come to the house and I talked to him. And he said, he told them, next time they done that, he would get a ticket. He hadn't built no fire under that carport and he hadn't built one on the front porch. And he hadn't played his loud music since the first of this, last week. So, Mayor, I'm bringing this, this here is where it started. You was elected. It's your job, I feel like, with the people that you've got sitting there beside you, to come up with something to help me with this. I don't have no other place to go. But I'm not going to sit by and see my house burned up in this one next door to me or see my property destroyed on account of this junked-up place here beside it, rat-infected place. I'm not going to do it. I'm going to give somebody some trouble. And, Mayor, that's not my nature. I try to help people. Ever since I've been in Rose City, I've tried to help people have that place a better, safer place, cleaner place to live. And last council meeting out here, there was a lady approached me and wanted $10.